They win.
Alright, turn on your mics.
Alright. Welcome to our city council work session meeting. It is Tuesday, October nineteenth, two thousand twenty-one, and it's five thirty P. M. We welcome all those who are here in person, as well as those on YouTube Live to our meeting tonight. We'd like to begin, we have four council members here. Councilman Miller said he was gonna try and be here, but we'll see what's going on, if he makes it or not. We have enough to do business, so we'll begin with a pledge of allegiance. Is there anyone willing to lead us in that tonight?
I will.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Betsy. You'd also like to have an invocation or inspirational thought? Is there anyone willing to offer that tonight?
I can do that, Mayor.
Thank you, Lynn.
Our Father in Heaven, we're thankful for everything that Thou has blessed us with. We're thankful for this community, for the citizens, for the jobs that we have working with the city. We're so thankful for the much-needed moisture that has fallen and pray that it will continue. We pray for the health and strength and benefit of our citizens, that we can continue to strive to be better people and get along and to have one common goal. We pray that we will have Thy Spirit with us this evening as we make decisions. We will be able to make correct decisions and do the best for this city and our community. These things we pray for at this time, in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Alright, discussion items. Number one, Payson-Santaquin Chamber Agreement Update Discussion. Go ahead, Jason.
Alright, Mayor and Council, I think Ben's put together a kind of a slide to highlight what exactly is happening in this proposal. So, the agreement, the operation agreement between Payson and Santaquin Area Chamber of Commerce and Santaquin City and Payson City is in need of being updated. It hasn't been touched for a while, and there's a lot of dates, and even the address of the the office for the Chamber of Commerce needed to be updated. So, a lot of updates that needed to take place, but something that we wanted to bring to you for the work meeting tonight was just to discuss some other things in the contract that I think can be updated or amended. So, as Ben's got up on the board, some of these things apply more to Payson. We don't really need to go into it, but I guess it's good for you to know kind of what, where they're at and what they're doing. But in terms of Santaquin City, we are proposing to remove the obligation that the Chamber run the Santaquin Light Parade. Part of the reason for that is we've got a great community services department that I think helps out a lot with that anyways, and really can take that on and use their expertise to run a great event. As you know, that light parade is being expanded into a more of a winter festival called Santaquin Holidays. So, there's a lot of work being done to make that a much better event. But the reason to remove the Chamber wasn't, wasn't, you know, they were doing a bad job or anything. It was, it was the hope to have them focus more on something that was gonna support business. You know, there was an element of that in the light parade, but I think something that they can do and do contractually, it'd probably be better to have them focus something, focus on something more that would benefit businesses. So, in lieu of that, it's proposed that they, they continue to do the hometown market. This past summer, they did that for several weeks of the summer on Monday nights, and it was, it was a pretty, pretty good success. And so, that is a direct benefit to businesses and giving them a space to, particularly some of the smaller businesses and home occupations that may not have like a, you know, point of sales, point of contact type of a setup in their homes. It gave them an opportunity to be able to market and expose their businesses there. So, it's proposed to remove the light parade and then have the hometown market there in its place. In addition, you can see that it removes the rodeo Santaquin. What that means is there was, there was some language in the agreement that talked about them putting aside or maintaining a minimum of six thousand dollars in a separate Orchard Days Operational Reserve account. The reason for that was to, to use that for operations and funding of the Orchard Days booth with the, which the Chamber of Commerce did for a number of years. So, because that is not something, and I think in my position, I realized that the city felt like they were doing the Chamber a favor by having that booth, and I think the Chamber thought they were doing the city a favor by having that booth. And I think in helping both sides understand that, we really just leave it to them of whether they want to do it or not, and we're happy to work with the Chamber and have that booth there. They chose not to do it this year. They may in the future decide to do that. But we just propose that some of the language that really details that and, and you know, contractually has them setting aside money for that booth that it be removed. So, yeah, other than that, another addition that's not been in the contract, but has been kind of an unofficial agreement with the Chamber is that they would assist the cities in holding the Meet the Candidates events that happen for both the primary election and for the general election, if necessary. This year, Santaquin had both a primary, and they will have a general election, but for instance, Payson won't have an election at all. They wouldn't have had a primary anyways because they're doing ranked choice voting. But in future years, if they do have a general election, then that's, that's something that they would do. So, a lot of, a lot of the contract really actually is untouched. You know, Ben has on there a greater emphasis on tangible support of local businesses, reporting. There's some things in the contract. I think this has been good review to emphasize the need to do some of those things and, and, you know, we focused our efforts on supporting business. And then lesser emphasis would be on doing community events. Obviously, we have a community services department that's doing a great job of holding those events. The Chamber is absolutely welcome to be a part of those events and to be in, work in partnership to to really highlight and expose businesses, and they can do events themselves, and we're happy to support them in that. But I think from, from our standpoint, we want it to be more business-focused rather than on just running events for the city. So, that's, that's kind of a snapshot of what is in this contract. We wanted to bring it to you to really get, get your take on this, so we can continue to tweak things in the contract and get it ready for consideration of approval from both, from all three entities, Santaquin, Payson, and the Chamber of Commerce themselves. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have and would love to hear your thoughts about this contract and the state, the status of the Payson-Santaquin Area Chamber.
What's your thoughts? You're on the Chamber.
What's that?
You represent the city on the Chamber. What's your thoughts?
I guess I should.
Are we going in the right direction?
I think so, and I guess I should have started with saying that I've been asked, or I'm designated as the Santaquin City Representative on the Payson-Santaquin Area Board. So, for instance, we had our board meeting this morning, and I go to those meetings. Payson City, their representative happens to be a council member. So, yeah, there's a, there's a lot of changes and a lot of things being discussed, and I think it's all really going in the right direction. Like I say, it's kind of that refocusing on what the purpose of the Chamber is and how they can better support businesses. You know, we've, since I've worked for the city, which has been, you know, four and a half years ago when I started, you know, we've gone through, two, we're on our third executive director in that time. I think we've got a great executive director today in Michelle Lines. We've had board members come and go, and I think we've got some board members that are pretty forward-thinking and excited about, you know, refocusing things on the supportive businesses. So, I think that we're on the right track. I've emphasized time and time again with him that one of, one of your goals as Santaquin City elected officials is to see them become self-sustaining. So, I think they, they want to continue that, that continue that working relationship with the cities and have your support. But I think it's not about them being self-sustaining so we can take a step back. It's about them being self-sustaining, self-sustainable so that they can, you know, not have to rely on the cities in order to even be functional. So, yeah, we continue to support the Chamber and I guess part of the contract, so that you know what's, what the cities are obligated to do. Based on population, Payson pays the Chamber twelve thousand dollars annually, and Santaquin City pays the Chamber six thousand dollars annually. And so, they use that to really, a lot of that, I think, goes towards paying the salaries of the couple full-time, I shouldn't say full-time, but the couple employees that the Chamber has. They have the executive director, and then they have a treasurer that, that helps keep the financials of the Chamber. So, yeah, to answer your question, I think they're, they're moving in a good direction and and trying to, you know, put more focus on supporting businesses. So, it's just continuing to remind ourselves of what that purpose is.
Where are they at with welcome packets? Are they gonna do more of that, or are they gonna do less, or?
So, and, yeah, that's something that, that then has needed to be addressed. That's something I brought up. We held kind of a, for lack of a better term, kind of a mid-year retreat about a month ago or so. And that was something that I'd emphasize and ask for is making sure that we had those welcome packets. I personally see that as one of the best things the Chamber can do to really get business information and and help new residents know what businesses are available to them. And so, there was, there was some discussion there. That's something I'll continue to follow up on, is making sure that we have those welcome packets. Because I do think that is something that is a great support to businesses.
You know, I've thought for a long time it'd be nice to have a directory of especially home businesses that we don't know about, you know? If we had a directory and what they did, as residents, we can make sure we use those as often as we can. And most of the time, we don't even know who they are or where they're at. So, something like that could, a directory of all the businesses could really help.
And something that Michelle's working on that she's really excited about is a new revamped website that's gonna be a lot easier to navigate and have that type of information. It's a little tricky for the Chamber because it's that balance between supporting all businesses, which is what, you know, the city wants to see, and being able to provide the support and the benefits for members that sign up and pay their dues to be a member of the Chamber of Commerce. So, you know, they're, they're not just limited their, their support and their benefits to just members of the Payson-Santaquin Area Chamber of Commerce. However, to get the most benefits, businesses need to join and pay those dues to, again, that's part of helping them be self-sufficient and self-sustainable. So, yeah, that's something.
On the other hand, if the Chamber offers something like that, a directory of the homes, businesses, they would be more likely to sign up because they're getting something for their dues or whatever that way. So, I think it goes both ways. If they can help them, I think they're gonna have more home businesses sign up with the Chamber.
Right. So, I'll make that a point of emphasis as well to them, that a directory is something that you would like to see.
David?
Yeah, I don't know how the Chamber feels about it, but I kind of feel like that, how can I be polite about it, I guess? I feel that the Chamber looks at Santaquin as the stepchild. When it comes to contacting businesses, and I understand the membership part of that, but I know there's members that's been at part of it and then left. The reason they left, though, is because of the actions of the Chamber. And I feel like that there's never any time that the Chamber goes back and talks to these businesses and finds out why or what's going on and get an idea of why they left in the first place. Because I think if they would interact with them and talk to them, I think that you'd get more members to stay. And even like the mayor says, you'd get more business to join if they felt that there was some kind of a
Yeah.
connection with them.
Well, and that was a topic, a conversation that we had at this last meeting was, was how to best retain members and really get people to join. And so, there is an ambassador program. Again, I'll, I'll give some credit to our executive director. She is a big reason why we're able to retain and get new membership. She does a great job of that. But yeah, we have members of the board that are, have been designated to be ambassadors that should be going out and doing those visits. I would, I think, you know, your feelings about Santaquin being the stepchild, I think, I think you'd actually be pleasantly surprised that I think there's actually a really good involvement from Santaquin businesses. In fact, our current president is, is Ben Glazer, who, you know, is a part of the Santaquin business.
And the past president was.
And the past president was, and we have.
Two-thirds of the board is probably.
Yeah. If anything, I think it's probably leaning more towards Santaquin just because of the involvement of Santaquin business owners on the board. So, I, I would not, in my experience and my exposure to the Chamber, I would not suggest that there's any sort of leaning towards Payson versus Santaquin.
I think maybe it used to be that way, but it's not that way currently, at least in my experience. And I think Michelle is doing a fantastic job. I think she, she's a, she's, she's doing an excellent job. And I, I'm fine with the things that are being removed and the things that are added. I would like more information on what the Chamber Board's ideas are for those tangible supports to businesses. I would just like to know, you know, what are some of the ideas that they are kind of kicking around a little bit? And, and I'm, thanks, Ben, for pulling this up on our website. This newest, this list of newest businesses is just right there in our website. I think we need to advertise, though, how to find it, like make, I don't, I don't know how we can make it a little more clear or.
We could do a video similar to the video on how to, where you go to vote and those other videos.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. Yeah, we could do a video saying, hey, do you know that we have a new business directory? And maybe we could keep businesses on the newest list for like their first year or something. And then we could have a business directory that is the other local businesses, including the home occupations, and transfer the, those that were on the newest list after their first year to the other business directory. I know that for me and the business that I own as a home occupation, I have a city business license, but I have not joined the Chamber because of the dues, and I didn't see that the benefits outweighed the cost to me personally because of that. So, I don't know if there could be like a home occupation due structure and another business structure. I don't, I don't know what the options are for that, but it just might be something to consider and think about.
Our whole goal is to help them to focus on the return on investment.
Yeah.
Both cities are putting money in, and we're actually substantially less because we have the rodeo, and that was the making up of the difference. They had that prime spot in the rodeo, and it was quite a good fundraiser for them. So, I'm not sure if Payson's gonna come back and look at that a little bit differently as far as the contribution levels. Those haven't changed for years, and our, both cities have grown substantially. But the return on investment is the issue, and having them come in and have an open dialogue with both councils on a regular basis, at least quarterly, talking about what they've done. I, I think our emphasis is less on having them do the community activities where they're just busy to really showing us how they're bringing value to the businesses, bringing new businesses in and keeping our current businesses strong. And, and we're less about wanting to put that into the contractual language as we are about putting the return report language in there, sharing with us their story so that we can better understand. And that's the key. There's, there's one other aspect I forgot to put in the slide, and that is that the billboard that was Chamber-owned blew over. It was Payson City-owned that the Chamber used. That was taken out of the agreement too, but that's a Payson issue.
It blew over? It was a hundred years old anyway.
Yeah. Yeah, well, it's not in the contract anymore, so.
Or supposed to be removed.
Question kind of relates to everything. What would it take, or what does it take for us to have a Santaquin Chamber of Commerce not associated with Payson? Not complaining, just curious. What, because it seems like if we had that, we could set our own fee schedule. We could make what we need to have for these people. We could take our six thousand, pay our own person to do what their person's doing for both cities. So, tell me why that can't happen.
So, that's how it was, and Nick would probably be the best person to talk to about it because he was, he was president of the Chamber for many years during that period of time. And both Chambers were struggling. They both had just a very few people who were carrying the load for everybody else, and the workload on them was tremendous. And it was just too hard to sustain, and so that's why we merged, so that there would be strength. What we're actually finding now is that most of it, probably two-thirds, is really still coming from Santaquin.
And we've grown a lot.
And we have grown a lot, and, and I see that it's gonna eventually evolve and separate, but Salem and Spanish workers are still together, and they, and they're very strong. There is strength. There's a Utah Valley that brings the whole Utah Valley together as far as Chamber is concerned. It's benefiting the region and recognizing that we're not in competition necessarily with Payson, but together we can work towards a stronger valley, and that's what we're really trying to work towards.
And I think it's important to remember that I, I think it's, there's value, and it probably needs to remain, that the Chamber of Commerce be a separate entity. Now, I think they can be supported by the city, but again, that's why the Chamber is great for doing Meet the Candidates is because, you know, they're, they're not a city entity. And really, what they should be is a voice for, a collective voice for businesses. And I think if it's a city entity, then it complicates the voice of the businesses if, if, you know, they can't have as, as open a voice if it's under the umbrella of the city. So, it's, it's good that it remains separate.
One of the things that we've asked them to do, as an idea from our perspective, is quite often we get told Santaquin's not friendly, right? We don't welcome businesses in. We're turning businesses away. And I'm not aware of a business we've ever turned away in the twelve years that I've been here. We have certain standards, our code. People might come in and do due diligence and find out what they can build in a certain area of town, and maybe that fits or doesn't, but without knowing what that business might be. But recognizing that we're blind, everybody has blind from their own perspective. You see things through their, our own world. And business owners don't necessarily look at city code the same way that the people who helped draft the code look at it. And so, one of the things that we've asked them, an idea, is we'd like you, Chamber of Commerce, to read our city code and tell us what is holding people back. Tell us what we can do to be more warm and welcoming. We've asked the, we want the farmers to do the same thing. Tell us what we can do to be more agricultural-friendly. Because they can see it through their eyes so much better, and they can give us perspective. Now, we might not always be able to do that. For example, one, one request that we got is, you should let me put my A-frame sign out anywhere I want on Main Street. Not just right in front of my store. Well, but what if you put your A-frames, what if somebody puts an A-frame sign, let's say you have a hair salon, and somebody says, opens up down the road, puts their A-frame sign in front of your store, bringing your business to theirs? There's certain competition, certain fairness. There's the old adage that, you know, new hairstylist moves to town and they have eight-dollar haircuts. And, and it starts putting the local person out of business until they put up a sign that says, we fix eight-dollar haircuts. And, and suddenly it brings people back, right? And so, it's trying to create a fair set of rules and helping them and us to have a dialogue, and that's what it's really about, to welcome business in.
Great.
Any other comments, questions? I have one, and I hesitate to ask it, but I think it needs to be asked. It says, in the last few years, two years, for example, the new businesses that have come to Santaquin, how many of them are on the Chamber? Start out with Big O.
Yeah, and that's a great question. I don't know. I don't know the.
Macy's. Is Macy's on?
I, I know that they've been contacted, and again, that goes back to making sure that they can understand the benefit that comes from the Chamber.
Iceberg, Marco's Pizza, and we're gonna have a ton more coming. Why aren't they getting these businesses on the Chamber?
Is that something that we can specifically ask Michelle to do? Create a flyer or something that she can take to businesses that clearly defines in bullets? These are the benefits for your business joining the Chamber.
So, we already have that.
Zion's Bank.
Okay, there is already something.
No, I know they're not on.
And like I say, this, this is not necessarily a reflection on, on the Payson-Santaquin Area Chamber, I just need to call it the Chamber, of their efforts. Sometimes the businesses just don't want to be on the Chamber.
Right.
And so, I know, I know Michelle has gone above and beyond with some of these businesses and some in Payson as well.
Because she, I've heard her talk about that, but I didn't know that it had been finished. So, I'm happy to know that, that that kind of marketing effort has been done. I wonder if she were to go and deliver those materials to businesses with the owner of another business that is a member.
Right.
And they can kind of be a spokesperson to say.
There's some salesmanship that's gotta be that happened here.
This is what I get out of it.
But I think it goes back to what you're saying, is if, if, if there's not bang for the buck or it's too expensive for the bang for the buck, that can change. They can decide that. They can say, we're either charging too much, or we gotta figure out a way to make it worthwhile. Advertising, whatever's gotta change so that every business wants to be on it, not, I gotta decide whether to be on it because I'm not gonna get anything out of it and it's too expensive. That should never be a question. It should be, yeah, I want on it because look at the free advertising. If it costs me a few bucks, that's great.
Well, like I say, Michelle has done a great job, and I know.
Yeah, I'm not blaming anybody.
She's personally gone above and beyond to try and contact some businesses, and she's just given a cold shoulder.
Yeah.
They just aren't interested, but.
Well, and that could be from the past, you know, things that have happened there.
Right.
They've gotta be able to show them what they're gonna do and how they're gonna do it.
And in full disclosure, something I've been emphasizing lately, even as, as, just even this morning, I talked with, with the board about this, was the need to, to create a little bit more of a distance between members of the Chamber and non-members of the Chamber. I think sometimes they hold events and they do things that if you're a non-member, you basically can get the same benefit out of it, out of it as if you were a member of the Chamber, and that's, that's fine. We want to, we want to support all businesses, but, you know, if we're holding an event and the purpose of the event is to do networking, well, we're not going to, you know, stop people who are other business owners that aren't members of the Chamber from attending that event and networking. So, it's, it's kind of, we need to make sure that the, being a member of the Chamber does have its benefits and its benefits that the businesses, you know, can't lose out on. So, yeah, to speak to your point, I think it's, it's really making that, that benefit clear and make it attractive for businesses so that they do join the Chamber. But again, it's not just because we haven't been contacting them, and it hasn't because we haven't been trying. It's, it's just sometimes, you know.
Maybe they need to get the mayor to go with them.
And yeah, that would be a great, a great idea.
Sounds like you just signed yourself up for some field trips.
I haven't got much time left.
Well, that's what I'm saying. You just signed yourself up for some field trips.
When we had Dave Tuckett, the city manager of Payson, come and talk to us during these negotiations, and he did share a good story that it wasn't all that long ago that Mayor Wright, knowing the type of businesses that Payson wanted to bring in and the limitations that they had, made a cold call to Paris RV. And they'd never had a mayor call them up before, ever, inviting them to their community. And that was the, the start of bringing Paris RV to Payson. And more power, more credit to, to Mayor Wright for that effort, but it takes all of us. We're all ambassadors of our community, so.
Anything else? Took a half hour of an hour meeting on that one, Jason.
If you want to dig into more details, you know, there's a bold list of activities that's expected. I'm happy to go through it with you. Give me ideas about the contract. I'd love to hear from you, but otherwise we'll, we'll just continue to. To massage this and, and we'll have it back to you at an upcoming meeting for your consideration of approval.
Okay. Discussion item number two, storm drainage, curb, gutter, sidewalk prioritization.
Mayor Council, this is a, the first of many discussions that we will likely have with this council and the future council. And we are barely going to scratch the surface about this, this overall topic. But it's come to us from a couple of different um, angles. Santaquin City several years ago, recognizing that the, the census was coming. Um, and that we are not a MS four uh, community. Um, recognize that our population is increasing, that it's on our horizon. That we would become an MS four where we have to deal with stormwater and quality of that stormwater and how we take care of it. Um, we are also looking at it um, from the point of view of the fact that many of our irrigation ditches have gone away. And we have flooding issues within our community. We have um, uh, work that, that uh, our assistant city manager and, and engineer have done. To uh, try to have debris flow um, uh, analysis and done and, and have been extremely successful in getting grants. To had, try to help us in um, capturing watershed um, issues. And we've completed our, our storm drainage master plan to help. Start to pave the way of how we're gonna deal, deal with storm drainage in the future, not only because we're required, but because it's the right thing to do for our community. And then most recently, we've had residents come and talk to the city about um, safe walking routes to the schools. And how they can have crossings and sidewalks put into the core area of town so that, that, that children can safely walk to. Um, the Apple Valley Elementary and Santaquin Elementary where there's not a, a, a large number of sidewalks in our core part of town. And sidewalks lend themselves to curb, which lends themselves to gutter, so it lends themselves to storm drainage. And so this is really a comprehensive look um, at our entire community and how. Are we gonna deal with this, uh, deal with this issue because it is an extremely expensive uh, proposition. Uh, in the future and it's also something that we have to bite one, I take one bite at a time if we're gonna take care of this. And then lastly, um, our community development department, you'll often see on your council agendas, deferral agreements. Where we don't yet have the design of where the curb gutter and sidewalk should be. Don't know exactly what the elevations would be. We don't know how far in the street it will be. And so we defer that so that we're doing entire block at a time and don't have curb sticking out in the middle of the roads. And those deferral agreements eventually expire and so we might walk away. From, from that in general. So we, we're starting to try to take a look at that and trying to put our arms around it and better understand how we can prioritize. Um, and take care of this issue over the long term. So city standards today, um, and um, I, I prepared this with knowing that Norm was gonna be out of town. When I had this ready for our last meeting. So um, I'm gonna pretend like I know what I'm talking about, but if you have any questions, you can ask the person who really knows what he's talking about. Um, but our city standards uh, uh, basically outline how a ninety-nine foot cross-section uh, would lay out in our community. Uh, typically with the amount of asphalt, curb gutter and sidewalk. It does have uh, park strips and, and trees. And yet uh, within the storm drainage master plan and I guess the assignment I'm, I have for all of you. And the assignment I would request of all of our candidates who are running for office is. Take the opportunity to read the storm drainage master plan that's on our website. Because it, it, it is a major project that's gonna be in our future and having a good understanding of the option, all the different options is gonna be important. Um, but one of the, the options is, is talking about bringing in the asphalt and having more grass or more. Um, vegetation um, and less asphalt to take care of and, and there's different costs associated with each. Um, the two major options that the city could choose from is your standard curb gutter and sidewalk. Option or city swells. And back east where I come from, where it rains and you don't have irrigation, it just, you have ditches. You have ditches everywhere. And um, and the more gradual the slope of those ditches, the easier it is to take care of driveways and all that type of thing. But it carries the water and it carries it away. You'll still need to have sidewalks in those swells. But where the sidewalks are and how they have ADA ramps and all that type of thing varies dramatically from the two different options. Not only is there a cost variation, but there's an aesthetic variation. Our community is an agrarian community. We. We pride ourselves in, in our agriculture. We, we love the look of, of um, the agricultural feel that we have. And part of that is having, having swells and ditches and people be able to pull off and, and park in the core area of town is something that's very appealing to many. Um, and, and of course, um, who's, who's gonna pay for things? Um, in the storm drainage master plan, uh, block by block retention is, is, is. What the city is looking towards as, as far as how it would hold its water. That means you'd have infiltration galleries um, and not some anymore, right? Just infiltration galleries, block by block that catch the water for that block. And um, percolate, it would percolate down into the ground. As opposed to a collection system that collects it all to one area and then you have to treat that water. So that's how our blocks are set up. So it gives us a little bit of flexibility because we're not necessarily having to start. At the low point and work our way backwards up because we're doing it block by block. So we can have some flexibility, but. Um, how we prioritize that is, is something, it's a policy decision of the council. And as staff, we just took a, a first crack look at it on what would make sense. And very flexible, this can change in any fashion, but in looking at our core area of town where we do not have curb gutter and sidewalk. Where does it make sense for us to have curb and gutter and sidewalk, your standard look and feel? And we know for sure Third West and Fourth East are streets from Bergamian's time. That are not the full width of the core area streets within town. There's simply not enough right of way. Without taking people's entire front yards to put in the swells that we would need. Um, we, we're having a discussion next meeting on the Third West issue. Fourth East is a similar issue. And yet um, off of Fourth East, you have a, a large commercial area that's growing and we have a high school in the future. And so um, we recognize that there's gonna need to be a widening effort and engineering effort there in Fourth East. But then we also look at walking corridors uh, for, for schools and that's why um, I have on there uh, First. South and Fourth North, First South leading to Santaquin Elementary School and Fourth North. Somewhat leading there to Apple Valley Elementary as far as bringing the core uh, into town. Um, the green areas are areas that would uh, be more appropriate potentially for. Um, for the swells and, and the more agrarian look, but very open-minded to the areas of town. Uh, that you think is best and how we prioritize those because we can't afford to do it all at once unless you take out. Uh, a major debt instrument that isn't advisable. So it's really sitting down and saying block by block, which maybe we're gonna. Budget for one block of curb gutter and sidewalk or two blocks of, of um, of the swells in each given year. And we knock them off one at a time and we go after CDBG grants um, in the areas where we can um, can seek after uh, federal funding. Uh, through state, state appropriations. And so what are the costs involved? Well, generally speaking, um, uh, I'm gonna maybe come back to this slide. Block by block, it's five hundred and fifteen thousand is an estimate of the curb gutter and sidewalk. As opposed to a hundred and ninety-four for the, the uh, storm drainage aspect of the swell approach. Not inclusive of the sidewalk and irrigation system. Um, or any curb or gutter, gutter there or asphalt widening. But basically about two for one as far as costs are concerned. And so when you look at the overall uh, total costs, I'm gonna jump over to Norm here a little bit. Um, to do the fifty-six blocks, if we were just dealing with a storm drainage issue, um, with the swells is the eleven point two uh, million. And if we were to do uh, the uh, curb gutter and sidewalk through our entire area of town, it would be the twenty-nine point one uh, million dollars.
And keeping in mind that these are twenty seventeen costs from the twenty seventeen master plan, so likely the costs are gonna, going to be higher than this.
And then that gets into um, a lot of other things that are maybe a little more politically sensitive. Uh, to how we deal with things. Um, of course, what type and where is a question. I've posed that and laid that out to you and. And block by block, the current and future councils are gonna need to decide how to do it. Do we prioritize it based on starting at the schools and working our way out? So we can catch as much of the pedestrian traffic. Does it start with working from Main Street? Out towards uh, the community in, in that way that's more walkable to Main Street? Is it starting at the low point from a, um. From a technical and water flows point of view and working your way uphill. So it starts at the north and works south. Those are all things that we could look at. Um, we've already talked about the deferral agreements and we could look at it from a prioritization of deferral agreements. What areas of town have the most and maybe it makes sense to do a, a block that has one or two deferral agreements on it so that we don't lose that. That potential uh, participation by uh, the homeowner that is, is obligated to pay for their proportionate share. And then that leads to an even bigger discussion. Who pays? And how do you pay? And, and uh, and this is really a policy decision. This is an elected leader decision. Because our core area of town is the area of town that doesn't have curb gutter and sidewalk. The core area of town has the widest right of ways within our community. Um, and yet the coronary town is probably least financially viable or have the viability to, to necessarily pay for those. If it were block by block, it could be paid for by the residents. It could be paid for by the city as a whole. It could be bonded for. There's lots of different ways to look at it. To somebody who has curb gutter and sidewalk in front of their house existing, they've paid for that curb gutter and sidewalk in the price of their mortgage. As opposed to in town, when they bought theirs, it doesn't have curb gutter and sidewalk, they have not paid for theirs. So. Is it right for the entire city to pay? Well, sometimes it is. The entire city pays for school district because it's for the greater good of the community that we educate our children. And um, I'm near, near being an empty nester. My youngest has turned sixteen today. And very, very, within a couple of years, I'm not gonna have kids at home. So should I pay to have the NIBO school district get um, resources? Of course I should because, because um, my kids benefited. My grandkids will benefit from it. I benefited from it and it's for the greater good of the community. So is that something? The storm drainage like that where it benefits the entire community and everybody should participate? And that type of situation, you, many communities impose a fee, a monthly fee and, and start taking care of these storm drainage projects. You could also do it by um, an assessment block by block as it goes forward. And, and then it could be more impactful on say, on a, um, maybe you have a, a little lady who lives on a corner. Who has a fairly big lot in the core area of town and has a lot of frontage. And if you do it by linear feet, that could impact that property owner much greater than it could maybe a smaller one and. And to somebody who could uh, better afford it. So. I'm not saying that there is a right or a wrong approach, but an approach does need to be discussed and figured out. By our elected leaders on how to move forward. Um, what logically makes sense is that uh, we start. Um, we take the first step uh, because you, we can't, we're at a point where we can no longer put our heads in the sand on certain issues. Uh, that are facing our city and um, and taking a first step means prioritizing it at, at a minimum. And, and then trying to figure it out. We can always budget for a block at a time. And it would may, might take us fifty-six years to get through all fifty-six blocks, but you can do it a block at a time. And, and that, that obligation gets smaller and smaller with each pro- progressive project. We can take certain sections of town at a time. Um, we can look at it however the council desires to look at it.
And on the, on the negative side of that is the costs are gonna go up every year you.
Every year. As opposed to if you took out a, a debt instrument, it's never gonna get cheaper than it is today and you could do the whole city all at once. And take care of it and be done and then pay that off over time. That is another way to look at it and, and ultimately it is a cheaper way to do it. But the burden is heaviest on day one of that debt instrument. Because you have a population base of, of X number and we pay for it all at once, but each year our city grows. And so that debt instrument is spread over a greater number of people and it becomes less burdensome each year going forward. Um, right now, new residents pay for it. You know, with their, with either their home or their um, their subdivision that they come in. Are they paying for it twice? There's all those type of questions and so. Don't know exactly where you want to go with this. Um, and I think in many aspects, this is something that, that the new council. Would um, would certainly need to weigh in on because um, they would be the people implementing it. And um, but the, the prioritization is probably the very first step. And um, it may take several work meetings to get there.
So you think we are qualified now that we have to start implementing storm drain then?
We're not there today.
Okay.
And mostly because our city limits don't, are not contiguous with Payson. Um, smaller cities such as um, Salem and, and Mapleton and, and other cities are already MS four. Because they are contiguous to other MS four cities.
Their water, storm water runs into another city.
Right, or their, their, their boundaries are touching. And so it just naturally expands the service area. Um, for us, we, we're not touching Payson yet. Um, but at some point, we will, this will be an obligation. It's, but it's more than just. Um, the day that that MS four comes. There are issues facing our community such as walkability to schools that are fa- we are facing today.
To kind of get an idea, we have a storm drainage fee right now.
So we implemented a one dollar fee and intentionally only did one dollar so that it would be enough to generate. Money to do a, a storm drainage master plan study. That's all we've done. And uh, we haven't taken on any other projects. Most cities have a five to eight dollar a month fee. And that allows them to accumulate enough funds to start doing projects like the one we have on Fourth, Fourth East on the East bench. Um, in other areas of town where we have known storm drainage issues that we just don't have the resources today. But because we did that study, we do have an impact fee that we've now imposed and new development is proportionately paying to the level of service. And we are starting to collect impact fees. Used on the impact that's created, not on the deficiency that's already there. That has to be carried by the existing residents.
Too many rules.
Lots of rules. That's for sure.
So, so we also have started, as you remember, we have a, a CDBG grant that we were awarded two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Plus or minus that, that we'll be doing a first block, which is starting at the post office and going down Center Street. So that may make sense to continue to. Perpetuate that down the north end of Main Street or south or whatever. But, but we have started. It's just a matter of where do we go from here? And, and it's likely that every other year, we might be able to get some grant funding to help with that, but not a guarantee by any means. Uh, actually that CDBG grant is, is contingent upon LMI, which is low to moderate income. For the folks that live in the area that would benefit from that. So it could very well be possible that the next block. Wouldn't even qualify for the same funding that we already have for that first block.
Qualify for the grant.
Right.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, and I think Ben did a really good job of kind of laying this out. Uh, there's a number of different angles you can go off of this. One, one that I, I keep emphasizing and I think part of it's because it gives me nightmares at night, uh, are those deferral agreements. Um, and again, that is an agreement when, when someone develops and, and develops under our, our newer subdivision rules. Which have been done in the last several years, but when they develop, they're obligated to do all the infrastructure improvements for that subdivision. So curb gutter sidewalk. However, because we haven't had the, this discussion and we haven't uh, definitively decided on how stormwater is gonna be handled in the core area of town. We've entered in these deferral agreements where it basically kicks the can down the road. However, the, the uh, responsibility to pay for those improvements. Is still on the person who received that, that subdivision approval. Um.
For a period of time.
And, and that's what keeps me up at night is, is these, these deferral agreements have a sunset on them. Um, and the, the earliest sunset of, because we, we listed out all the deferral agreements, there's, there's a deferral agreement that could sunset as early as twenty twenty-six. Now, we're a few months away from being twenty twenty-two. That's gonna happen sooner than we think and. And yes, it's an agreement. Yes, it's something that they're obligated to do. However, my fear is that a, a lot of these developments that have done this. Aren't done by developers. They're done by, you know, your average resident that is looking to get an extra lot or two. Out of their large uh, core area parcel. And so my fear is that we get down the road and we're gonna. Show up to their door and say, you know, we need to check for, you know, ten thousand, twenty thousand dollars, however much it's gonna cost to do those improvements. And they're not gonna be ready. And then it's gonna become even more of a headache and a nightmare for all of us to try and.
So.
Work through that agreement and.
How close are we to having those numbers to be able to tell them this is how, what the elevation's gotta go in at and give them a date?
So I think step one is to prioritize. So I think step one is to prioritize what type you want in each area. Because if you do that, then step two is to get the, at least a, a thirty to fifty percent design and engineering. For the entire community. And then you would know, is this gonna be a swell area? Is this gonna be a curb gutter area? Generally, what, what, what is needed in that, that particular area? And then um, prioritize them. If you prioritize them and you know what blocks you're gonna do in order, you can see generally speaking. Hey, this neighborhood over here, you're three or five years out. You better put this on the horizon and we start giving notifications to prepare people that, hey, your project is coming up fairly soon. And, and if we take a logical approach, one step at a time, it may be a decade or two before we get this done, but it is something that is more manageable. But it's, it's, what you're looking at is that first step is prioritizing.
So to be clear also, we've talked about MS four, which is this, the federal EPA requirements for stormwater. There, there's many different aspects that Ben has touched on here. Everything from curb and gutter to stormwater to swales to sidewalks. The, the EPA and MS four is strictly related to water quality and how you, how you um. Create or don't impair the, the waters of, of the United States, the state of Utah, et cetera. So that, that's one component of it. The sidewalks are, are a separate component of that as well. You, you can again use curb and gutter to help with that. Curb and gutter gives a little bit more of a barrier, but you could also have a lo- a wider distance where the sidewalks are set back quite a bit farther. Uh, past the swales. So there, there, there's many things that we're talking about here that, that kind of go into this discussion that we're having.
So to, to finish my point, I, I think we wanna give particularly these people who've entered into deferral agreements. Two, three years notice, not two or three months, cause that's just not gonna work. And it's gonna become a really. Like I say, a nightmare for all of us or whoever's, you know, there having to, to, to try and deal with these threats. It might not even be the residents who entered in the def- deferral agreements. It might be their posterity. Who's taken over the lot and has no idea about the obligation that they have to pay that. But there's, there's several thousands of dollars that are in these deferral agreements. And again, that's just one component of this, but I think it's something that emphasizes the reason for why we need to figure this out now. Rather than wait till, you know, we're, we're, you know, the eleventh hour and, and we're trying to get things happening.
If we do the no sidewalks, well. Because it's cheaper.
We would probably still put a sidewalk in, but yes.
Can that be a forever thing or are we eventually gonna have to have curb and gutter thirty years from now anyway?
It could be a forever thing. It depends on how it's designed and that's why we wanna design it in a way that's going to adequately meet the MS four. Storm drainage requirements.
But with that said, maintenance on a swell is much higher and has long-term costs that are, would impact. Our public works crews who have to take care and clean out and mow and all that type of thing.
Isn't that why they're doing curb gutter sidewalk in most? Cities anyway, I mean, you build a new city up on the hill, that's what we're putting in, right?
That's right. That's right. And, and on top of what, what Jason was just saying about giving proper notice. Um, we may wanna look at creative ways to, to move forward. For example, if you have a block of town that you wanna do and you're not spreading that cost over the entire city. For example, let's say you go that direction and let's say you want curb and gutter, all that. It could be very costly to the residents there. Maybe the city fronts that money, but allows them to put that on their utility bill over a year or two years or three years or something like that. Um, maybe there's creative ways that we can make, uh, find successful solutions that are not overly impactful.
I have to go with, you know, I grew up in Payson. And when Payson came to my dad and said. You need curb gutter sidewalk on both sides of your lot. We lived on a corner. You can imagine about how that went. But. Uh, if I remember right, I, I think. Payson ended up, it, to me, it's a com- it's gonna have to be a combination, I think. You're gonna have to have homeowners put some skin in the game. And I think we can get, try to get grants to help. But to me, there's, there, there's no way an, an owner. I don't think, especially on corner lots, could ever come up with the kind of money you're talking about on either that. So it, it almost to me is we gotta look at. Uh, a lot of ways to try to bring money into that. But I think the owners also need to put skin in the game.
And, and to be clear, Ben's not proposing that.
No, no, I know.
But to be clear, deferral agreements is one hundred percent of those who've entered in that agreement, their obligation to put those improvements in.
Yep, and with that said, I don't think any of those owners actually expect that that bill, that bill will ever come due.
Hence the nightmares.
And that's what I'm saying though. I mean, at, at what point are they gonna go, what, what?
Right. It's a, it's a, a big issue.
And, and, and every, anytime someone enters into a deferral agreement, I sit down in a lecture room for a good fifteen minutes on exactly what a deferral agreement is. It's not a waiver. And so again, but some of these people that, that I've, and that, that I've talked to. That have entered into a deferral agreement with the city, um, they're, they're a little bit older. And so, you know, ten, fifteen years down the road, they know, may not even be around. So that's why it's even more of a focus to, to not have those things. Just kind of sit out there, but to, to act on it so that um, those who've, who've entered in that agreement can fulfill their bu- end of the bargain.
So I, I guess what I would, I would, you know, you always wanna have takeaways, right? All right, what, so therefore what? I have, I'm trying to learn from my, my elders. So therefore what?
You say the first step is deciding where you want it?
Right. So what I, what I would like to ask, and then please tell me if I'm wrong. I'd like to ask our elected leaders and our future elected leaders to take the time to read the storm drainage master plan. If this looks like a fairly good start, what I would propose is we turn this over technically. To, to put a proposal together on every single block. This is the type we're gonna do and, and maybe a prioritization. Then we bring that back because. I, I learned a long time ago, you walk somebody into a store and you show them two white shirts. Or show them a white shirt, they're gonna buy a white shirt and they're gonna walk out. You look great in that white shirt. Mary, you look great in that white shirt. If I show you two white shirts, you're gonna get confused and not know which white shirt to buy, right? It's harder to say. If I ask six different people, what are your opinions on how it should be prioritized? That's gonna, you're gonna get six different opinions on how, how this should lay out. So we give a first crack to our, our engineering crew. To have them take a look and, and what makes, makes logical sense as far as a prioritization. Then we bring that back to you and the future you. And we allow you to, to uh, not allow, we request of you. That you go through and tweak it as you deem appropriate. So concurrently, you're working on reading, we're working on a prioritization uh, plan. We don't even think about the costs or how to make it easier on everybody or anything like that, or who pays or is it holistic? We'll worry about that later. Today, we worry about um, a, a, about understanding the plan. Prioritizing and laying out the plan and um, and then as we get closer to budget season. Um, how we budget for an overall engineering study on, on implementing that plan uh, by, by design. And then we take it one step at a time going forward.
So because we've made this new classification. When will the pressure come to have this done and how long could we? Even though we don't want to, I get that. How long could we hide our head in the sand and say, we're not doing this? So as far as the storm water is concerned, two, two things to go along with that and then I'll answer your question. The, remember that the eleven point two million dollars or the two hundred thousand dollars per block is only storm drain. It's not ADA ramps, it's not sidewalk. Not only do, do we take out the curb and gutter, we also take out. Out of that number, not necessarily that we don't need to do it. But just keep in mind that that is only storm drain.
No asphalt, right?
No, no increase in asphalt, no change in utilities, no curb gutter sidewalk, no sprinkler systems, no nothing. Um, but to answer your question, the, the real answer comes from somebody that's outside of our. Uh, ability to control that and that is the state of Utah as it's mandated from the, from the feds. And so the way that I understand it right now is that they reevaluate MS fours every five years. They just did it in twenty nineteen, it was pushed to twenty twenty and then still is kind of dangling out there a little bit because. Of COVID and not having, they've, they've not gotten the twenty twenty version of it updated. So we could potentially get what I call invited to that dance that we don't want to attend um, necessarily. Uh, somewhere around twenty twenty-five, I would imagine that they will be looking at it twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. To where it be- become a mandate. Now, I, I don't mean that we don't wanna ever be good stewards. I, we, it just is a very, very expensive process to be in MS four. In fact, the other municipalities around us have hired two to three full-time equivalents, trucks, equipment, et cetera. At the minute, ju- just for that, that specific purpose. And so.
So with that then, you, they say, okay, now you need to get this done. As long as you're working on it, you're good, right?
That is correct. So, so.
And I appreciate the, Ben's always good at, you know, let's get planned and do this and I appreciate that. Um, but we could just start working on it and not put ourselves in a mess with this, right?
Deferral agreements, we're gonna lose this money.
So it's, yeah, it's not just MS four.
We, we need to do it, but, but do it fiscally responsibly.
Well, and we have constantly have requests for uh, school crossings and getting kids to school, sidewalks and all that kind of stuff. So we have pressures coming from many different sides. Um, I'm certainly not proposing that we go full bore, try to take it all at once, but we can take logical steps. And that's, that's what I, I think that we need to understand what we don't understand. And that means we really need to study and learn that. Storm drainage master plan and plan it going forward.
I, I think starting now is really good planning and it's, it's taking one bite to, to eat an elephant. If, if we wait, it's only gonna be, you know. Trying to eat an elephant in a, in a short few years of time, trying to get caught up with all the, the state mandates that are put on us. So. Starting now, it's, it's not like the highest priority, but I think we should, we should, it's our recommendation that it's becomes a little bit more of a priority. So that it's a lot more manageable and easier for a residence over a long period of time rather than just a stark um, policy implementation.
Well, in this, in the words of Stephen Covey, this isn't urgent, it's important. And it's one of those important things that is not gonna become urgent until it does. And when it does, it's gonna be too costly and too hard to deal with. So let's take care of it when it's important.
Good. Any other else on this? We're out of time. You wanna talk about anything on the agenda?
Um, nope, we can cover all the regular meeting and.
We'll adjourn till our, our meeting at seven o'clock.